Call of the meeting of Rankin County Board of Supervisors, March 2nd, 2015 order. At this time, Mr. Jay Bishop, do I have an invocation?
Everybody bow with me, please. Dear Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here today. Please be with us as we conduct the business of the county, that we do things in a manner pleasing to you. Lord, please be with these boys as they go back to school and watch over them. Thank you for the men and women who serve in our country and in our harm's way today. Please watch over them and their families. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, we have something pretty special that we're always excited to be able to do. It involves young people and the success they've had in achieving, which takes a strong work ethic to get there. But I'd like to let Mr. Bishop handle this from here, his recognition of Pearl High School Soccer Team.
Thank you, sir. First, I want to thank the team for showing up here today, giving us the opportunity to show our appreciation to you and the coach and the administration for coming. You know, you guys have set the bar real high here, winning out of the 14 years, winning 10 championships. I don't see that being done again until you win another one. Only thing, make this year a little sweeter if y'all could have beaten Brandon. I'm sure I can take a championship over beating Brandon any day. But, you know, I just want y'all to enjoy your moment here. This is something no one can ever take away from you. And, you know, just like in life, you can apply what you did this year. Hard work and surround yourself with a good team, you can be successful. So, our attorney has a resolution he's gonna read, but before we do that, I'd like to start with the front row right here, and you guys tell us your name until we get through the very back. We'll start right here.
Billy Smith.
Chance Black.
Andrea Zebra.
Haynes Cook.
Kyle Magino.
Brandon Hewitt.
Griffon Bush.
Doris Rose.
Cameron Mee.
Peyton Dade.
James Smith.
Danny Webb.
Cole Patrick.
Big Blue.
Martha Frank.
Purple Dennis.
Tanner Berry.
Blake Bell.
Casey Ury.
Tanner Berry.
Damian.
L.D. Carver.
Grayson Smith.
I'm your own one.
Kevin Salas.
Dorian Childers.
Paxton Bowns.
Drake Walker.
Dalton Sullivan.
And Cruz Dragan.
Thank you all for coming. Go ahead, Mr. Slade.
I have a question.
Yes.
The ladies on the team?
She's the manager.
Okay.
So you keep them in line, I guess, huh?
And so the answer to your question is yes. Answer to the question, absolutely. Ms. Bishop, thank you. It's indeed a privilege to welcome the Pearl High School Boys Soccer Team here today for a most deserving recognition by this board. We're excited to be able to recognize you guys on your accomplishment. I believe that this was championship number two in a row, if I remember correctly. And so you guys are on a path that obviously is one of great success. We would encourage you guys to continue with your hard work. You're very fortunate to have excellent leadership, not only at the coach level, but good leadership at the administrative level, the school level. It's those guys that make sure you guys have good coaches. And so I know you want to express your appreciation to both your coach and to your administration for the success that you guys have realized. I was looking at the breakdown of the kids on the team, and I noticed that they've got several seniors, but this team is not a senior-laden team by any stretch of the imagination. All right, Coach? Got a lot of kids on this team that are underclassmen. And so what that means is that in Class 5A at least, somebody's gonna have to step up to beat you guys. Y'all are at the top. And with a prerogative here, Mr. President, I would dare say that winning 10 championships out of 14 suggests that Pearl High School bunch right here, they may be the University of Alabama of the Boys High School Soccer.
I think Mr. Bush wanted to say something about that.
And he had to go there.
Congratulations, guys. I'm gonna call, I'm gonna read this resolution out. And before I do though, I do want to recognize our administration that's here today with us. Dr. Ray Morgino, can you stand and come forward, please? Dr. Morgino, of course, is superintendent. We're excited to have him here with us today. We have District Administrator Cedric Graham. Cedric, can you come forward as well, please? And we have Assistant Superintendent Kim LaFontaine. We also have Athletic Director Richard Smith-Hart. Richard, if you'll come forward. And Coach, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to come forward as well. This is Coach Chris Raj. And we're excited to have Coach with us today as well. As I told you guys previously, at some point in the resolution, you're gonna hear your name called. I'd like for you to come forward and do your best to spread out here as best you can, tighten up for me, so we can get a good photo shoot for us as well. This is a resolution commending and congratulating Pearl High School Boys Soccer Team upon winning the 2014-15 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 5A Soccer State Championship. Whereas on February 7th, 2015, the state tournament held in Madison Central, the Pearl High School Boys Soccer Team won the 2014-15 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 5A Soccer State Championship by defeating Germantown High School 2-0. Whereas the Pirates finished their championship season with a low record of 19 wins, 3 losses, and 3 ties. And whereas the members of the Pearl High School Boys Soccer Team for 2014-15 are seniors: Haynes Cook, Paxton Bowns, Dalton Sullivan, Blake Bell, Dorian Childers, Drake Walker. Our juniors: L.D. Carver, Kenny Thomas, Hunter Cable, Elias Farias, Elias cannot be with us today, Caleb Black, Jaren Rawls, Tanner Berry, Grayson Smith, Damian Winterstein, Javier Avalar, Parker Crane, Casey Ury, and Nick Lawrence. Our soccer mores: Amel Carr, Harper Hens, Peyton Jackson, Cameron Mee, Fred, James Smith-Hart, Andy Delson, Chance Black, Cole Packer, Kyle Morgino, Dylan Hayes, Nathaniel Webb, Griffin Bush, Brandon Hewitt, and Billy Smith. And of course, last but not least, our manager, Andrea Zebra. Whereas it is with great pride to have all citizens of Rankin County that we've recognized the accomplishments of this group of student athletes who have brought honor to their school, their families, and to Rankin County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for Rankin County does hereby congratulate the Pearl High School Boys Soccer Team under the leadership of head coach Chris Raj for winning the Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 5A State Soccer Championship and for their excellent 2014-15 season. And we extend to the team, coaches, administrators, and parents our best wishes for their future success. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Did all the parents get all the pictures y'all want? Y'all good?
Yeah. You need to move around, feel free to move around.
Y'all look like y'all have done this before. Thank you, guys, for coming over. Keep up the good work.
We got the resolution, the original resolution. I'm gonna present this to Coach Raj. We have plenty of paper, plenty of these kinds of enclosures, so next year, we can do this again. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Congratulations back there.
Hey, Grayson, who's your dad? I thought, I would have said that exactly. He had the same haircut you got when he was in high school. Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Those styles rolled back around every 20 to 40 years.
They said history this year.
When I graduated from 79, the style was that.
My best friends, it was always like this at our 10-year reunion. Chances are, they probably won't agree with that.
As you see, mine just changed color.
Yeah, Greg, I thought you'd.
Okay, while we're clearing the room, Chris, if you would like to make your way up here. We have a privilege to have Mr. Chris Kaufman, he's candidate for Senate District 35 seat, come here to introduce himself. So, this time, floor is yours. Give us just a second, let's see what they got here. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Thank y'all for letting me come and just introduce myself to all of you. My name's Chris Kaufman, and I live in Little Mississippie. Lived there most of my life. I have lived in Rankin County for a short period of time, but I'll get to that just in a minute. I am a 1985 graduate of Simpson Academy. Heard you say a while ago, 1985, Brandon High School.
Yes, sir.
Also graduate of Colley Engineer College, 1987, and 1989 graduate of Bill Hader College, where I received a BA in history, a major in history. After college, I married a local girl there from big town of D-Lo, Melissa Hilton Kaufman. We have three kids. We have Kay, who is 18, and the freshman at Colley in the home. Abby, who is a sophomore at Simpson Academy, and Bryce, who's an eighth grader at Simpson Academy. After graduating college, I coached varsity basketball and taught school for 10 years. First at Hillcrest Christian School, Loper in South Jackson, and then for three years over at East Rankin Academy in Pelehatchee. There, I went home to Simpson Academy and coached there for six years. After 10 years of doing that, I knew that I needed to do something different and was lucky enough, fortunate enough, that our school board president at that time was also the president of Trustmark Bank in McGee. So I took a job at Trustmark Bank in McGee and worked there five years and have now been with Peoples Bank for the last 11 years, working in the middle. This opportunity came up to run this year for Senate District 35, and I've always had a desire to serve in a position such as this. And with Perry Lee announcing that he would retire after this term, I decided that the time was right for me to go ahead and give it a run. I'm basing my campaign pretty much on four principles, and those are smaller, less intrusive government, less regulation in the private sector, also on lower or stable taxes, at least stable taxes, if we can drop the taxes, and also individual freedom and responsibility. Those are my four basic principles of government that I'm basing my campaign on. Every vote that I take will be based off of that. Every decision that I make will be based off of that. I feel like I could go and do a good job for not just Simpson County, but also Rankin County and nearby county. I want to represent all parts of my district, not just my whole county. So, you know, I want to let you know that I will be there for you. If you ever need me for anything, please feel free to call me. I want to help make, keep making Rankin County the most powerful county in the state, which I think it is. I think it's the best county in the state, and I want to continue doing that. Anyway, just wanted to introduce myself, let you know who I am, and I appreciate the time and opportunities I get.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Presentation by Gulf South Pipeline.
This is Mr. Bill Smith. He's an attorney with, is it Kaufman? That's right. And he's representing Gulf South Pipeline, and so he's gonna give you guys a quick presentation on some of the activities that you might can expect out of Gulf South in the near future.
It's been my privilege to represent this county for a long time, and they're truly one of the great citizens that we have in this state. They're an interstate pipeline that transports natural gas really throughout the southeast to communities in Mississippi, Louisiana, Texas, Alabama, Georgia, and up the East Coast. You may remember them, if you've been around here for a while, when their name was United Gas Pipeline. That was their original name. And they were headquartered in their Mississippi operation in downtown Jackson. They gave that building about 25 years ago to Mississippi College, and that is now the Mississippi College School of Law. And their state operations in Mississippi are now headquartered in Flowood. They're about to do some work on a pipeline that was built in 1952 and transcends about 20 counties in Mississippi. I'm kind of amazed at this, but they monitor these pipelines 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by computer out of Houston, Texas. And they've got about 240 feet of pipe in Rankin County that they're gonna replace. At the present time, it doesn't appear we're gonna interfere with any roads, but we actually, and the engineer I hope to have with me today is in the field today in Rankin County doing actual staking and survey work for the different sections that they're actually going to replace in the pipeline in Rankin County. Craig asked me to blow up, and I'm gonna lead with you. And this map of Rankin County comes in about three or four different pages. You have to go through six of Hope County. Because the pipeline is built in 10-foot sections of pipe. It's a 30-inch pipeline, and the 240 of those 10-foot segments in Rankin County they're gonna replace. They've already done this work south of here, Simpson, all the way down to Pike County. They're gonna be doing some work north of here, from Tallahassee through Leake, Madison, Haynes, and then into Rankin. And so this will show you for your district where the pipe is being replaced. What we'd like to do, if you'd like to have it, is at the next regular scheduled meeting, have an engineer here, once you've had a chance, to look at the map and look at your district. We'll then know for certain whether we're gonna have to do any work with roads or anything of that nature. Obviously, any of that, we pay to put them back just like they were. You've probably never heard of this company, but since 1952, they've paid to Rankin County and the city of Pearl, the city of Flowood, over $100 million in adblock taxes. And they're great citizens to have because they don't answer any services, they just pay the taxes. They deliver gas to companies like Center Point, and then Center Point distributes it to people's homes. But we just, I wanted to come, give y'all a heads up. Y'all are gonna hear from landowners, I have no doubt. We wanted you to know what was going on. Be happy to answer any questions if you wanted, but if you prefer, you study the map, you may have specific questions, and we'll be back to see you with an engineer who'll know a hell of a lot more than that.
So these different sections are not in one area, they're scattered, I see.
They're scattered throughout the county.
I got you.
So I'm assuming y'all get with the various water departments and all that also, correct? Because I know that impacts them.
Yeah, we do. We work with everybody. The interstate pipeline business, as you would expect, is highly regulated.
Right.
And there's an outfit called PHMSO, which is an acronym for something that's part of the Department of Transportation that's overseeing this work and inspecting all that sort of thing.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Smith, most of the property we're talking about here is property that's either actually owned by Gulf South Pipeline outright or over which Gulf South Pipeline has an easement, a permanent right of claim.
That's correct. And you guys are familiar with this, but you bunch of pipelines run through Rankin County, and I represent most of them. They acquire these easements, they generally pay the landowner the fee value for the land, and other than building, building on top of it, putting the lake on top of it, the landowner can continue to use the surface. In fact, a good friend of mine's father was the developer of the Cross Gates. Pipeline runs through there, and he told us when they developed that, the first lots they sold were the ones that abutted the pipeline, because the people get a bigger yard and they don't have to pay for it or pay taxes for it. They've been good citizens, and I'm proud to represent them.
Is there gonna be temporary easement acquired for some of those?
No, we don't think so. We have the rights under our easements to maintain or replace the pipe at any time, and we think we can do this work strictly on our easements. It's not like building a pipeline where you gotta get temporary easements and work space and lay down areas for pipe, as I say. 240 10-foot segments right now appear they're gonna place in this county.
Well, some of this part, and I'm sure that it's been an ongoing looking at, I guess, but, you know, what happened at the reservoir several months ago, was that a partial part of what's to come? I mean, reason why?
In part, in truth, they're expanding the capacity of this line and they want to make sure that it's, you know, 100% safe.
Right.
Don't have events like that. On any pipeline, that's always possible.
Correct.
But thank goodness it was in a remote area.
Right.
But that's not the driving force behind it. I'm sure there's some guys that said, "Well, look, we need to check on this." They'd really like to step up the pressure on this line. There's been some growth, thank goodness, in some of the counties in Mississippi that need to hold, that need to carry more gas.
Got you, okay. So, next meeting, be good? Will your engineer be prepared then?
I think so. As I say, they're in the field, and if we run into any problems, I'll get with, with the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next. Next, we have old business. Most approved.
We don't have any.
Old business. Nothing, nobody. Brian?
I think I can bring something on in here, maybe on comments, just to run something by y'all. I was approached several months ago, I got a call from the Mississippi Phim Commission or whatever it is, liaison person, and there's a company that came in, the one in Rankin County with a theme, I think it's got Bay Hill in it, it's about police all day in this area for stuff like this. Anyway, they came in disaffirming the Pearl and on Airport Road and everything, well, they contacted us back, and I just wanted to run it by y'all because it's on county property. They want to come in this Saturday and be on the catwalk. They'd like you to just forward, and then other DA's office. So, of course, I checked with each one of the judges, micro guests, and all of them, but I just want to make sure the board didn't have a problem with it.
They're gonna do it while it's all empty?
Yeah, yes, it'll be on Saturday when everybody's out. Make sure everybody's on, no one knows about it in case you get a call number two that it's okay with y'all.
Is any kind of, I mean, so you have to, we have, will we have to have some type of security?
I provided them security.
Yeah, okay.
And I have a sheriff's office deployed with them the whole time.
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay, no old business. Consent agenda.
Most approved.
Second. I have a question on the last consent agenda. You had a, we had an item, if the line item changed, what is that, what was that?
On the road?
I think it was out of Larry's office.
On the last one, not on this?
Yeah.
That's just moving money from one item into another. There was no increase in the amount, it was just moving it for purchase of, I believe that was on your records.
Yeah, every time they transfer.
It was on records. Every time I move money, make an amendment, even if it's no increase.
So we have to approve that?
Yes. And so it just moved from one line item to another.
Okay. Okay, I had a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir.
And a second by Mr. Johnson. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? John Sullivan.
The unopposed John Sullivan.
Most of y'all got me for 58 months, whether you like it.
I'll make a petition to change this for 2014 real personal property assessment.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll be, send one of my employees to conference.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop.
Keith.
Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? No, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would say authority to publish the homestead sent to you headline at Rankin County and Peterson Rankin record for the week of March 16th, 2015, which is what happens to by state.
Most approved.
Second. Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Bridgette Harigan. Purchase clerk. Good morning.
Purchase clerk, we got two. Best one we got, too. Underpaid. You do still live in my district, right?
We have copier contracts this morning with Rico, the Massapeur, Google Ford, Review Corp, Geo Medical Dispatch, that is a copyright extension service in IT department, and this is replacing machines that are about to expire.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Long list, quick work. Dale Westbrook.
I make a motion to approve work accomplished and scheduled.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good work, Dale.
Craig Slade.
Mr. President, items A and B under my section are to set conditional hearings on conditional use requests for the same date. I'd like to take items A and B with your permission together. That is to set public hearings on, a public hearing on April 6th, 2015, 9:00 a.m. for Nancy Bar sale, conditional use request District 4, and Tapa quarter, conditional use request District 1.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, items C is a matter that we addressed initially at the work session. I'll remind the board that the sheriff brought to our attention an issue related to our transient vendor ordinance, which did not, the original, the amended ordinance that exists today does not address the situation where the sheriff issues a license to a transient vendor who then goes out into the community and may encounter a planted subdivision in the county that has a sign at the entrance that says "No Solicitation." There was a misunderstanding on the part of those who received the license that they somehow had permission to ignore that signage on the planted subdivision entrance, and we go in and solicit anyway. And so the sheriff recognized that as a contradiction, as a problem, and we want to fix that, and we can fix that by simply amending our transient vendor ordinance and adding the following language that I'll read for, "Notwithstanding the issuance of a license under this ordinance, the salesperson shall refrain from conducting any sales activity on property where signage is posted." where signage is posted declaring, declaring that solicitation is not allowed. Signage posted at the entrance or entrances to platid subdivisions located outside municipal boundaries in Rankin County indicating that solicitation is not allowed shall be deemed to be signage applicable to each and every parcel of property located within the platid subdivision, and no solicitation will take place there." So that clears up the issue completely. Now the sheriff can advise, because order specifically says it, any licensed solicitor is going to have to refrain from any solicitation inside platid subdivision in the county where they put a sign that says, "No solicitation."
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Laura Oster.
That I might have for you today is a request of approval to renew our Motorola contract for a term of six months, effective April 1, 2015, and authority to extend the contract if needed until our new upgrade system is in. At that time, it'll go away. If it's completed before six months, it'll terminate at that time.
Motion to approve.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any additional business to be discussed?
We do need executive session for personnel.
Okay.
Make a motion to discuss the need going to executive session.
Second.
Motion. Need going to executive session by Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Renee, you got off easy today.
Good morning. Good morning, Darrell. Good morning.
Candidate.
You gotta stop sign and street sign down on my property.
Uh, we can handle that in about, it's gonna be about 11 months when we take care of that.
No, I'll take care of it. My rich corner, Hanley and the Rutherford. Stop sign, the whole thing, street sign, stop sign.
Somebody took the whole thing?
Well, it's not, there's no tracks. I don't know what, that's what, neighbor was, I came home the other day. Guy doesn't have it by it.
Somebody just picked it up out of it.
Which I forgot, hide it down there. There's no tracks. Somebody hit it.
Give me the streets again. A.
Little billboard for it to put back up.
HA. Where is that?
Lot off Brad. The Rutherford turns off Brad.
Off Brad.
Yes.
You live back there?
You gonna be there tomorrow night?
But anyway, I just, I said, it's weird. Looks like, it looks like literally it's just been pulled up out of ground, laid down.
Oh, is it still there?
Yes.
Oh, oh, that'd be easy then.
I'll give it a damn.
All right. I was thinking it was gone.
No, it's there. It looks, it literally looks like somebody just came over and just pushed it over, or picks it up, and turned, and laid it down. There's no tracks. I could be able to get it. It's my first thought.
That'll make it a lot easier.
I handled that one.
I know you can. Because you're a good supervisor.
I tried to.
At least that's what somebody on Facebook said.
Actually, he died yesterday.
Is it Tom? I was seeing those posts, and I was saying, it sounded like he did.
He didn't start for us.
Good seeing you.
All right, you too.
I was shocked when I saw you decided not to. Because I'd just seen your son a week before. He was talking about you.
See you later.
Take care, bud. Take care, sir. You did a great job. Excellent, excellent job, yeah. Heck, yeah.
Okay.
This will be on the, the issue of the EOC, Scott, and that vacancy. And so that's what it's about.
Motion going to executive session, discuss personnel.
Second.
Motion going to executive session made by Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?